This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for February 9th, 2021. Please take note that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District in response to the continuing pandemic emergency and the circumstances caused by that pandemic and consistent with the New York State Governor's Orders, executive orders, we are conducting our scheduled public meeting this evening, February 9th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM, held via Zoom and streamed through the district through our Zoom webinar feature on our website. In a moment, we will offer the opportunity for public participation. If there are any members of the public who have joined us this evening and would like to either comment or ask a question of the board, please use the chat feature on the bottom of your screen and put your name and your address, please, and we will call on you to allow you to ask a question or to make a comment. In addition to that, any members of the public watching us live or on rebroadcast at a future date, you're welcome to contact us through email, telephone, or postal mail. All of our contact information is on the district website, and we would be happy to entertain any question or comment that you wish to submit to the Board of Education. Dr. McGowan, has anyone yet logged in on the chat feature for that?
No, they have not.
Okay, well, we'll keep an eye on that, and again, remind folks that they can contact us through our normal contact information also. Board members, then, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved. Okay.
Karen, and seconded by Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It is seven in favor and none opposed. Next, we have approval of minutes from our last meeting, the meeting on January 19th, 2021, business meeting. Could we have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
That would be Larry and Andrea. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes, additions or deletions?
I see that Dr. Sacks is still listed instead of me on the participants. So we just switch that.
You know, like a bad penny?
That Dr. Sacks, he keeps.
Obviously, no, no, we all, we all know love Mar Sacks, and Dr. Sacks is still, he is among us and with us. However, he is not attending the meeting in any official capacity, correct?
I'll fix it.
Thank you, Dr. Gasparino, and we will make that correction.
Every time he tries to get out, we pull him back.
I know, I know, we're trying to try to do that, so. I think he's, something's going on in the electronics, I guess, there, so. All right, with that correction, does anyone else have anything additional to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seven in favor and none opposed. This evening, we welcome our Director of Health, Physical Education, Athletics, Nate Merritt, for his report to the board and to the district and the community on our health, physical education, and athletics program. Nate, welcome and thank you.
Thanks so much. I'm just going to share my screen here real quick. So obviously, exciting first slide here, and I see the smiles on the screen right now. We are very excited, as we are the Brighton Bruins now, to officially have a secondary level and an athletic symbol on our left and a K by five version on the right that we're really happy about and excited about that will come out to the community very shortly here. So we are very excited about this, so I thought that was a good way to start with some excitement. As we moved into this year, obviously with many challenges, I can't say enough about the health and physical education staff in their flexibility and, and the way that they navigated through tough times to continue to push forward with curriculum, to continue to meet students' needs, and to do so in a really creative way. Obviously, our health educators, so much of the time spent with kids, whether it be on Zoom or physically in class, so much focus was on mental health, how we're relieving stress at this time, how kids are able to balance the hybrid model or the remote model, and our health educators have really taken a strong initiative to really look at different ways to, you know, to relieve some stress for kids in creative ways, and they've made really great connections. They continue to do really innovative things in and out of the classroom. Our online presence with our educators and our students has been remarkable, and I will talk about that a little bit more at the end of the PhysEd model, as Dr. Baker and myself had really good conversations throughout this school year in the progress that we have made. One thing that has continued, and I brought this up last year in my report at the secondary level, we continue to really have critical conversations, bring local professionals in to talk about real-life situations, and put our secondary students in spots where they're seeing things and able to ask questions firsthand with, with working professionals in many areas of health fields, mental health, drug and alcohol, but all of the above, and we've been able to maintain that through this hybrid model or remote model, and that's something that I commend our secondary health educators to continue that, as it was a success when they brought in guest speakers, and we've been able to do so so far this year, and it's been a highlight for kids, for sure. Moving on to physical education, you know, physical education, as many of us know, with all of the gyms closing over this past year, it was one of those content areas that, you know, we did have the ability to really take our curriculum and move it to an online presence to keep kids active. Obviously, you know, creating connections has been the big thing. All of, you know, our K-12 physical educators really look at ways to make connections with kids to ensure, you know, physical activity, again, a great stress reliever for kids at this time, and to continue creating ways that they can move their body in a safe and healthy way and also give some relief. We've, you know, looked at our curriculum and, you know, to my point from earlier in the health slide, one thing that Dr. Baker and I have talked about at great length is, you know, I feel really, really good about where we are as a health and physical education staff right now, and I can say that with no doubt, the adjustments that have been made, you know, over the last year as we've kind of, you know, you know, hit a time that we have never seen before, I can say without a doubt that, you know, we could adjust on the fly. If we had to go all remote tomorrow, both of those content areas could do so with ease and, and continue to get the curriculum that we need out to kids, and I, and I think that's, you know, I applaud our staff members that have, you know, kind of taken some risks, stumbled a little bit, learned from mistakes, and continued forward to still reach, you know, kids in different ways. And I think this year, what we have learned will only make us better for the future in, in the two content areas, for sure. This year has been a really interesting one as far as athletics go, you know, across, you know, across country and locally as well. Last spring, you know, if you always start with the spring before, and if we all remember, this was the time where we were leaving school and our sports seasons were canceled. Our seniors didn't have our, the opportunity to finish up their athletic careers. We moved into the fall, really not knowing even if we were returning to school, definitely didn't have an idea of athletics at that point, and they made a choice at the state level to approve some low and moderate-risk sports, and we were able to offer those at the JV and varsity level. I can tell you, our staff went, you know, took a lot of time and effort to put the safety protocols in place so that we were playing soccer in the fall, you know, we were playing field hockey, and it went off really, really well, and we kept our kids safe, and at the same time, doing what they love on, on the field at that time. This winter, we moved into allowing Phase 1 of our winter, which was the low and the moderate, such as our swim and our ski programs. And then recently, a couple of weeks back, we at the state level approved our high-risk sports. So within a week's time, February 1st, we opened up JV and varsity basketball, wrestling, and hockey. We were just watched the end of our hockey team on, on the livestream right now, and they already played their first game, you know, a week and a half into the season. So it has been a whirlwind of a couple of weeks here. And again, everything that we've done, even with the high-risk sports, has had safety in mind, and the district has done a really nice job as taking a really strong stance on safety procedures in order for us to continue doing so safely. The spring outlook, obviously, we're going to try to offer as many things that we possibly can for kids from the modified JV and varsity levels, so that we can finish up this year strong while keeping kids safe. We always, I always like to point out to the Board of Education and the community, even during this tough time, you know, this, this year, from fall to now, without having our spring sports, you know, we were able to capture three sectional titles. Our fall varsity sports, all of them earned the Scholar-Athlete Distinction at the state level, which is a cumulative GPA of 90 or above for the entire team. You know, it's, it's a great honor, we say this every year, but our kids are really, truly student athletes, and we see that season, every season. One thing that I was very excited for, if you look at our numbers, just for our JV and varsity sports for that shortened fall season, we had 130 participants, which was fantastic, and, and already this winter with the newly approved sports, we will have well over 200 athletes and 200 student athletes, you know, in the gyms and on the ice rinks and in the pool. So again, our act, our participation level continues to grow in the community, and, you know, something that we're very proud of, we, we, you know, we continue to struggle with, you know, offerings and, and giving kids opportunity because of our numbers, but again, participation, we have, we have a ton of opportunities for kids, and we are very happy with the amount of participation that we are able, that we see in the district. Lastly, as we look ahead, moving forward for this year and in our future years, I think with all of the content areas with health, physical education, and athletics, you know, our highest priority right now is to, you know, keep kids safe in the classroom, you know, both health and physical education and on the athletic fields. And everything that we are doing at this time is, is with that in mind first, and then creating a really good environment for our kids to participate and to be safe and healthy. We will continue to look at creative ways to, to really get kids what they need and experience new things. And I think that's been a highlight as we've moved into this hybrid model and learning remotely. We've had, we forced ourselves to, as educators, to look at different ways to reach kids and give them different experiences, and we will continue to do so. And lastly, you know, the, the pride point for me, again, as I said, you know, we're in a very, very good space with our staffing, and I think that is a testament to, you know, the staff, how they've continued to learn in different ways. And I think that's something that we were definitely going to take from this past year and, and, you know, move to the future and continue to get better in, in all of those areas. And we're really looking forward to what the future will hold for all three of our content areas.
Thank you very much, Nate, we appreciate that. Board members, are there any questions of Nate or comment on anything that he presented this evening? I guess we, I would make note on behalf of the group, Nate, first of all, you know, we're very, we're appreciative that we can make athletics work in our district for students, and I think that's something that certainly would help in moving forward with everybody's well-being. And thank you and everyone involved for assuring that that can be continued on as safely as possible. I guess I would say number one. Number two, I think to our physical education folks, to be able to continue to offer that program in a way that, that you have been able to do it, both with hybrid and remote involved, and I just think that, you know, we've seen that in some of the principal reports and some of the other things that we posted online. It's just incredible, the, the, you know, the way that folks have gone about, you know, ingenuity. We've used, I've used that word 100 times, I think, since the last March, but I just think it's amazing, and the board is very appreciative. And then lastly, you know, you have a huge role as our safety officer, beyond what you reported on tonight, and you've done a, an outstanding job. You continue to do so, and I know that that work is far from over, but for all of your efforts on that front to keep everyone as safe as possible, buildings open, systems functioning, the interactions with outside agencies and entities, so thank you so much from the board for, for that effort, too.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Matt Tappin's right, that's, that's, that's an applause from all of us right there.
You know, over the summer, when we had to, to appoint a COVID coordinator, and
Everybody ran away.
Nate was just the slowest one out of the room at that moment, he was caught up in a deep conversation. Actually, but, you know, the thinking was, you know, obviously, we have a very capable team and wanted to make sure we had a capable person who could think through this, but also with athletics at that point not part of the picture, part of the idea was that Nate might be able to devote a portion of his time or resource to that, yet quickly after that, athletics was back on the docket. The COVID coordinator did not disappear. And here's a person who's had to figure out a testing program, figure out, you know, the communication pieces, the daily attestation, the emails that people are getting, the contact tracing, the everything, and manage all of the different safety questions along the way, while trying to figure out athletics in an entirely different area that came online, and with only a week to do that with the high-risk sports most certainly recently. So I would just join you, Mark, in saying that I wanted to point out to people what a great job Nate has done in those primaries that are normally part of his responsibility, but a giant job that he took on this year also. So again, thank you, Nate, on behalf of everybody, great work.
Fantastic, that does round two, yes. Well, thank you so much. We are going to move on now to the next item on our agenda, principal reports. And we will start out this evening with Matt Tappin, Principal, Council Rock Primary School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. I hope everyone's staying warm and doing well. Let's see. All right. All right, so as many of you may know, I think Nicole Urelees shared last time, Mr. Tappin has been a Bills fan his entire life, and it has just come full circle since high school that I've been a proud, well, I've always been a proud Bills fan, but to be able to see them. So we did celebrate with both students and staff wearing our Bills gear. I did, contrary to popular belief, allow other teams to wear their, their jerseys or their memorabilia, but I was not going to show those in the board report. Very proud of the Bills and congratulations to Tom Brady and the Buccaneers. So we'll move past that. I was hoping it was going to, you know, be a different story. So I just wanted to highlight, like we have kind of all year, our librarian, Adele Motzkowiczus, and her assistant, Kelsaki, and really all of our special areas have continued to adapt and make adjustments and find ways to, to do the impossible and, you know, continue to service our kids and, you know, not just settle with what we started with as our plan in September, but continue to grow. So our librarians have, our, everyone in the library has worked on creating, because our library is also kind of sequestered now in the construction zone and set far off from where it's really accessible. So we've set up kind of mobile, remote places for kids to be able to check out. You know, one of the things that's been a limitation too to the schedule is our special area schedule. Kids, you know, not getting the regular time, they're getting it, but it may not be as regular as when we're in person, five days a week. So kids have the opportunity to trade in books, they've worked on how to do remote pickups and remote drop-offs for those who are learning remotely, and the kids just love it, and really, it's been awesome to see, you know, how they've thought through, so I wanted to thank all our special areas. Our generosity and our community's generosity has continued during the pandemic. Our incredible PTSA Community Service Committee organized a toy and book drive after the holidays, and this is kind of the bounty that came from it. We got a lot of great toys and books that were donated to the Rochester City School, number 33, which also has a community center attached to it. So many thanks to the PTSA for helping to organize that and everyone who was able to donate. So winter has arrived, outside and inside. So the middle picture here is one of the really awesome features in the new section of the building, and I loved how, when I walked by, people are using it. Eventually, kids will be able to be in there reading books and things, but for now, we're using it for display. We've got, if you walk around there, snowflakes and all kinds of projects having to do with snow and snowmen and how to build snowmen, and then outside, kids are having the opportunity, as long as it's warm enough, to get out there and play in the snow. Just a reminder to parents, I send that every week in my newsletter, but as long as it is above 20, we will head outside to make sure your children come prepared for recess. We want to get them out, moving, playing, and outside as much as possible. So in January, we have lots of celebrations of diversity. Martin Luther King Jr., so this is a great project that was done by Adele Linton and Kathy Banbury, reading Martin's big words and then talking about the dreams that they have and then creating their own words artistic. So I see a lot of people really utilizing kind of that interdisciplinary art, writing, listening, and really tapping into the kids' creativity to make these great projects. And here's another project, when I think of Martin Luther King Jr., I think of, and they had to share what they, what they thought after doing some reading and then, again, some creation. So it's just really impressive to see the way our kids are thinking and gives me hope for our future in terms of their thoughts. Our first graders are writing all about research papers, so together, they wrote all about polar bears and snowy owls, learning and understanding how to gather facts, and then kind of synthesize those back into writing, and now they are working independently on their own choice papers for those researches. So this is a big project that all of our first graders are doing. And this is an example, I believe it's from Nicole Urelees, but inspired by the book Daniel's Good Day by Micah Archer, second graders did some sunrise pictures, kind of symbolizing the light, and then talking about what makes a good day for them. So this is in their opinion writing and supporting their opinion within their writing. So just really beautiful, again, sprucing up those, the hallways, and it's great to see so much kids work out there. Upcoming events, we have our virtual town halls this Thursday at Council Rock. 5:30 is specifically for kindergarten, and then 6 o'clock until 7 o'clock is kindergarten through second grade. Next week is, school is closed for February recess, and then right after the recess, Mrs. Reedhead and Mrs. Ball, who are two of our school counselors, who lead the Second Step Social Emotional Learning Program. I know Mr. Merritt talked about, you know, that the importance of keeping that social emotional learning at the forefront, and they have friends, they have two puppets, Snail and, oh God, Snail and someone else who do the asynchronous lessons, and
Tappin, it's Snail and Puppy, they're household names, yes.
Thank you, Snail and Puppy. I didn't want to say the wrong thing. I knew you would know, Dr. Gasparino. So Snail and Puppy will be making a live appearance with Mrs. Reedhead and Mrs. Ball, and they're going to do three different sessions, one for kindergarten at 6:00 PM, first grade at 6:30, and second grade at 7:00, and that is all Thursday, February 25th. And I know Mrs. Reedhead and Mrs. Ball are really looking forward to, there's going to be a little project that the kids will be able to do with their families, and really just to introduce them, their families, and get that live look at Second Step. So that is all I've got for you.
Thank you very much, Matt, we appreciate that. We'll move on to French Road Elementary and Dr. Rio.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I hope you're doing well. Thanks, Matt. It's funny, Matt, when I watch your presentation, it looks a lot like mine, and I didn't actually see yours at the time, because we're doing a lot of the similar things in our schools, which I always love to see. So at French Road, just also having a lot of fun in the snow at recess, it finally came, and our kids couldn't be happier about being able to be outside and playing. And most days, we've been able to be outside, a couple of days were too chilly, but the kids have been making snowmen outside, building forts, just having a lot of fun. And as much as I sometimes don't enjoy standing out in the snow, I do love seeing our kids out in the snow at recess. It's awesome. And the first few slides are going to focus on our remote learners. We have a lot of stuff going on in the school, but we've really tried to hone in on some of the things happening with our remote learners, too. And Ms. O'Neill and I have been doing mid-year meetings with all of our fully remote students and just doing some check-ins now that the year is halfway over, how they're feeling, the things that have been going really well for them, some struggles that they might, might be having and letting the kids share that. So we've met with each grade level and done a check-in, and we'll continue to do those throughout the remainder of the school year. And also, we started some breakfast and books with our third-grade remote learners. We did lunch and laps with fourth and fifth grade, and it's just been a great time to connect with the kids on a different level. You know, we do pop into their classroom Zooms and small groups to try and catch up with the kids and see what's going on as far as learning, but we had a lot of fun before school started, just having kids bring their breakfast, reading some books, telling jokes, and we're going to continue that as well throughout the remainder of the school year. And trying is, you know, to connect with our remote learners as much as we can, sending them notes every now and again, sending them stickers in the mail, just letting them know that even though we can't see their faces in person, we are thinking about them all the time. So this is one of our remote learners whose mom took a picture and sent it to me, and, and we just continue to think of ways to engage them and make sure they feel like they're part of our French Road community, because they are, they're a huge part of our community, so. We're also getting into Black History Month at French Road, and we have a lot of things going on this month, but this, these are our overarching kind of goals for the month. We are looking at just really helping kids to just develop that understanding of the importance of Black History Month, connecting towards that feeling of empathy for other people, understanding how to stand up for what's right. And then we want kids to leave feeling inspired to take action for the things that they believe in and what they're learning about. And every week throughout the month, started last week, and we'll continue on tomorrow and through the remainder of the month, we've been having some segments with video interviews of Brighton community members, and some of the faces you'll recognize and our kids recognize from school, and some are new friends to them, too. So just answering some questions each about, you know, why Black History Month is important, why being black is important, and each week we'll share a different question, and you'll get to hear from all of these members of the community. In addition, what our classes are working on right now is a Black History Changemaker Walk. In every classroom in the building, both remote and hybrid, we'll be sharing about an individual that they're learning a bit more about, and we're hoping to touch upon some people that we don't know a lot about yet. So we put together a really extensive list of about 60 people, and many of them are unfamiliar names to many of our students and staff and myself, and our goal is to celebrate the impact they've had on the community in some way, big or small, and make a walk through the building where kids can walk through, and we're planning on using QR codes to connect all of our remote learners to what's happening in the building and vice versa, and also be able to share that with family. So more to come about that, but as you start to walk around French Road, if you were there, you would see lots of this in action already outside classroom doors, research, and it's an exciting time for kids and for adults, too. This is a book that was part of a Second Step lesson with our school social worker, Mrs. O'Brien, and Ms. Kazoff's fourth-grade class. So they read a book, It's Okay to Be Different, and then the kids put together their own book, which was awesome. And actually, on Seesaw, you can listen to the whole book being read through. The kids found pictures and they decided all the different ways why it's okay to be different, and they each created a page to make this class book, and it was really pretty awesome what the kids put together. So here are a few pages just highlighted for you to see. And I think this might have gotten shared earlier by Betsy Balling, but I put it up again because it's our annual Take What You Need Board at Frazz, and this is always, always such a hit with our kids, especially during this COVID time of year right now, where kids are, we're really looking at their mental health a little more deeply right now, but you'll see posts, it's all over the school, where kids have taken things off the board and put them on their lockers or their desks, or they take them home. And, you know, some things are simple, like you can see a picture over here says donuts, and things are, you know, more like their friends or family or different things that they might need as well. So kids really connect to that, and I think our mental health team for putting that together for us. And along with what Mr. Tappin shared, our special areas are kind of coming back together here. So here are some pictures of our fourth graders in the library. So we just opened up the library in January again with some restrictions and special thoughts around what we've learned since September, but it was time to get it open again and get kids back in the library. And it's been awesome having them in there safely, small groups, following all the safety procedures that we put in place, and kids are, couldn't be happier, because our library was remodeled over the summer, and the kids haven't been able to see it. So we're still pushing into classrooms for library class, but now we have some open library time where kids, kids can come into the library to explore and check out books. And our kids are also back in our music classes at French Road. So again, these were finished up very early in the school year, but we had started So again, these were finished up very early in the school year, but we had started the year with specials in the classroom. So again, as time went on, we kind of brought specials back to special area classrooms. And these are some of our friends at every grade level, actually engaging in some music activities safely and dancing and being able to just get their bodies moving. And I was just in there today. They're loving having this space and being in the new music room. So that was fantastic to see. Upcoming events, we have our FRES Town Hall on Zoom tomorrow night. And then also, again, as Mr. Tappin mentioned, no school forbidden winter recess. We are doing a Read Across America Day at FRES at the beginning of March, all via Zoom. But we have lots and lots of special guest readers coming into the school building and then we'll be gearing up for Brighton Beliefs Day. Thanks.
Fantastic, Dr. Rio. Thank you so much. And again, as with Matt, thank you again for the look inside FRES. And you know, we just feel like the way the principals have been able to keep us connected without being in buildings has just been tremendous. And I will add one quick reminder to the community. The videotape talks that you did in honor of Black History Month are tremendous. And they're available to the community, they're available through the website, you can watch them and they really, really are well done. And each of them has got different messaging, different individuals. So I, kudos to putting that together. I think that turned out really, really well. So it's a nice community share also. So thank you so much. Next up, we're going to move over to Twelve Corners Middle School, Principal Jim Nunez.
Thank you very much. And I will share my screen here, make sure I try to do it right before we get going. And excellent, there we go. All right. So thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm happy to present on the work that we have been doing at Twelve Corners. First up here, we have some sixth grade ancient Egypt work. Our sixth graders have been working on a unit on Egypt. This is part of their culminating activities that they've been working on following their unit. This activity here was asking for significant images that students found relevant to their studies and writing a postcard based on what they had learned. And so there was a lot of great evidence of learning here and artifacts that they had shown throughout the course of the unit. Next up here, our family and consumer science classrooms have been working on an interior design unit. And here students were asked to design their dream bedroom. With that, they had been taught some certain elements and principles of design. So they were to put that together with some of the unique attributes of a classroom. And this was their first place winner for their contest, which was very unique and very colorful. And the, 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 the design of their bedroom, and here were a couple others to show from that. These were also done in a shoebox. So that's the other interesting part of it as well. And this was the last one here. Again, again, some nice, some of these students have had some talents in interior designing. So they've got a bright future there for themselves. Here's, we have some eighth graders working on abstract expressionist painting. Much of this was based on lyrics and the emotion of colors as inspiration. So it was quite interesting walking through and seeing them work on this and listening to great music inspiring them and their artistic abilities. So it was nice to see them at work here. Our sixth grade band here, we're working on rehearsing for their upcoming rehearsal and their upcoming performance that will be recorded this week. So they were working hard at putting this all together and they will be recording that via Zoom. So that will be a nice performance that they will have coming up for themselves. Fun activity that we've had leading up to the Super Bowl was the play on words in Super Bowl. And we had the Super Bowl challenge, a grade level competition for a food donation at the building. It was a grade level competition. And each of the administrators, myself, Mrs. Jacob and Dr. Malloy, each were responsible for a grade level. And the winning grade level had the opportunity to get the losing administrators with a pie in the face. And so that was quite fun. I had the sixth grade class, Mrs. Jacob had the seventh graders and Dr. Malloy had the eighth graders. And yes, the sixth graders did win. So I did find my way out and needless to say, the coach and me came out for those two weeks. And it's also nice to have sixth graders are easily motivated. So it was nice to have that. And here is the lead up to it. We have Mrs. Jacob there prepared for the pie and not to get anything out of retirees. Dr. Malloy was also getting ready. And here we have the evidence of it all. So that was nice and fun for our sixth graders to do. And not only did they have to do it once, but they had to do it twice for both cohorts. So that was also the fun part of it. So we had to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to take part in the fun. So that was great. For Black History Month, there's been a number of things that we've been working on there. Our Black Student Union have been working on a timeline of historical events that is posted outside of the library, which is nice and really informative for all to see. They also had a very great opportunity to meet with our town supervisor and our chief of police, which was motivated and inspired by the students. And they wanted to have a conversation with them about how to better have stronger community relations in the community, how they do that. And on the next slide, I'll show some questions that were asked, I thought that were rather poignant for our students to be asking them. We've also had staff readings on the morning show. Staff have been reading information and highlights of significant figures in African American history throughout the world. And also our remote students will be taking part in that as well. There's been such a high turnout for it that we will be taking it into March. So it's been nice to see the staff taking part in that and our students have really enjoyed that as well. So too, this is a little evidence of the conversation with the town supervisor and chief of police that our students in the Black Student Union had with them. But again, to the questions that I was referring to, this was a number of questions that they did ask and I highlighted a few there in the middle. How do you suggest our community should encourage inclusivity? And how do you plan to work empathy for others into law enforcement? And what is the plan to change discrimination within our public systems? So those were some really poignant questions that our students had for them. And I know that they really were inspired and appreciative of that time that they spent with them. So we do thank them for their time spent with our students. Here we have an upcoming P T S A event that is unique to our families. This was born from a previous P T S A meeting with the principals. And this one is facilitated by Aaron Cusano and Eric Oliveri, two of our counselors. And at one of our principal meetings a few months back, the focus was parenting in a pandemic and it was a very nice opportunity to families to share what their struggles have been with adjusting to raising their kids in this pandemic and how to deal with the, the change in it. And our families really found a great deal of value in it. So they have a follow-up meeting, which is coming up on February ten for them. And we're very happy and excited for that opportunity for our families to have. Upcoming events, as we know, we have the school closures. Also TCMS on February twenty third, we'll be having our schools to watch review with state officials. And so that'll be an interesting process for me, my first time going through it. So I'll be happy to have that in addition to our upcoming P T S A meeting with the principal and Deanna Spagnola, along with another one on March fourth, which that one will be focused on restorative practices. Our families wanted to know more about them, what are restorative practices and how we're using them in our schools. So we'll be very happy to share that information with them.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim. We appreciate that. Thank you for sharing the questions from our students for Chief Cataldi and Supervisor Maley. I mean, just fantastic and phenomenal when you consider middle schoolers asking questions of that level. And it's a, it's a great opportunity too, because Chief Cataldi and the Brighton Police Department are currently engaged in a community review of how they, how they practice law enforcement. And so it's a great opportunity to, you know, gather that input from, from young people in the community. So thank you for sharing that this evening. And we turn now to Dr. Hall to wrap up principal reports with his report from Brighton High School. And I see he used the aggressive brewing.
Well, this is kind of the unofficial aggressive brewing. I've not been given the, the, the logo, the official logo yet, but I'm sure Nate's going to share that with me tonight.
And it's just killing him that he doesn't have it in his PowerPoint right now. I just want you to know the next presentation does have it, Dr. Hall, because I couldn't help myself. I'm sorry. I know this is painful for you.
What's a mascot costume?
I was actually trying to text Dan Goldman to see if he could send it to me quickly so I can switch it out. But you know, it's all right. We got a bear and we're excited about it. So a couple of things Nate shared a little bit, but with our winter sports season getting started, we kind of have two seasons. Bowling, Alpine skiing, Nordic skiing and swimming have began back January first. And then our basketball, wrestling, ice hockey, as, as you know, and track and field started February first. Very excited about that. The kids are excited. And wrestling got started back on the, the first. And we actually have our first section five championship. Our, our kudos to our girls Nordic skiing team coached by Craig Mattern and Rachel Mattern. They just won that on Monday night. So kudos to them. An incredible event, I'm not sure if you were able to tune in as board members, but our Dr. Lover, who is our orchestra director, hosted on January twenty fifth, pretty much a celebration of Music Day. And hour on the hour, starting at eight A M., she was posting some recording, some live YouTube videos of duets, solos, groups performing from her orchestra from the entire fall season and all the preparation and prep work that they've done. And you could tune in throughout the day, parents had links to get to. I tuned in a few different occasions during the school day and some of the music was just absolutely incredible. And kudos to her and the kids for helping organize it. And I think it was great for them and it was great for their parents and family members to see. College Career Night, we, this was our fifth college and career night. We started that here at Brighton. I truly believe we have one of the best college career nights in the entire area, Western New York. Over two hundred parents showed up for the night. Kudos to the counseling department who does everything to prepare for this and lining up fifteen different presentations from college admissions officers, military recruiters, gap year specialists, people who are experts in the field of athletics and scholarships for athletics, what it takes, and also visual performing arts scholarships and programs. And they are there, everything was via Zoom this year and it seemed to run really smooth. And just again, kudos to the counseling department for taking this on. It was quite an experience and again, very appreciated by our families and our kids who showed up. Our culture climate leadership team continues to meet, talked about them back in December. We had another meeting in January and we, as a group, decided to roll out the United Ways Twenty One Day Racial Equity Challenge as part of Martin Luther Celebration of Martin Luther King and Black History Month. But all of the Rochester area, pretty much the faculty and staff of most of the districts in the area participated in the United Ways Twenty One Day Racial Challenge. And we are modifying it a bit for students, but we get, we sent out a welcome video last week and we'll be rolling out the second challenge this, end of this week. And we're asking students with club members or teams, friends to get together and do the challenges together. Read, watch, read the articles, watch the videos and have discussions together. And then we'll be promoting some of the challenges to be done actually in classrooms throughout the remainder of February and into March, probably right up through April break. B S U or Black Student Union is promoting several guest speakers. And when I prepared the PowerPoint, it wasn't quite done, but they are going to be doing actually tomorrow at the end of the school day, seeing the viewing of July sixty four, which tells the story of the race riots, the three-day race riots right here in Rochester. And after the viewing, they'll be having a talk back with the director, Chris Christopher, who actually directed that documentary. So that's one of many things that they're planning. We are also meeting tomorrow actually to brainstorm the ideas we came up with January. This is a subcommittee to continue to talk about how we can make our school environment more culturally responsive to everyone that walks through our hallways in our building. And now that we have the logo, it's going to be even better. But part of our task is to also promote the brewing at the high school level as everybody's mascot, not just the athletes, but everyone at the school. So there's some real creative ideas and very excited about that. These are the clubs and the student leaders who are part of C C L T. Oops. And our class of twenty twenty-five eighth grade parent night, we had that back at the end of January. Hundred and seventy-eight parent participants were there. We had T C M S staff, B H S staff. We talked about everything from choosing courses, course selection in January twenty twenty-one, all the way through what midterms will look like in twenty twenty-two. And everything in between for our eighth grade parents, talked about all the transition supports that are built in, Link Crew, Brighton Support Center, freshman activities that we'll have planned, just a few things that we'll be doing as we welcome our new class of twenty twenty-five. Just, that's unbelievable. We're well underway with doing our program planning right now through March first. From January twelfth through March first, counselors are actually meeting one-on-one with every single student in grades nine, ten and eleven. So our six counselors will be meeting with all of their kids to choose courses, one-on-one meetings from January twelfth through March first. And then we'll be running the numbers, looking at courses that are under ten and then courses that don't meet at least fifteen as a minimum. And we'll be then talking about staffing and preparing everything for the building of the master schedule over the April break. And Matt Como will be ready to tackle that this year. January early grads, we had a record year of January early grads this year. And I think, you know, the pandemic was definitely in impetus for that. We've never had this many early grads. But several kids who chose to be remote decided to double up, take what they needed to graduate. We had thirteen students graduate early this school year, which is quite, quite an endeavor and an accomplishment to finish up their senior year like this. I'm in the middle of calling all of them and just congratulating them, letting them know about junior or June events. And if those students can't participate in our regular graduation ceremony, we'll be holding individual ceremonies for them or anybody else who wants one while we're still in the pandemic. But our hope is we're going to have a big old celebration on the turf in June twenty-second. And as I get to closure here, you know, going back to our quarter one failure rate, you know, you hear about the data from around the country, around the state of how kids are doing with the pandemic and hybrid world versus remote world. You know, quarter one, we had a double, we had our failure rate doubled in quarter one. That was hybrid and remote students from eight point six percent to almost seventeen of our students failing one or more classes. Quarter two, luckily, again, a lot of interventions been put into place while the percentage is higher. Historically, it basically went up four points from, you know, last year of almost thirteen percent to seventeen percent. So didn't jump as much during the second quarter. But the interesting thing is about fifteen percent of our hybrid students failed one or more. But in remote world, while seventy percent of the kids are doing well, thirty percent are failing one or more. So that's quite significant. We're working hard to work with them and their families. And we've been meeting with our remote students every month, once or twice a month with all the remote students to bring them still into the fold. They're a part of C C L T. Some of them are playing athletics. Some are in clubs and activities that are meeting through Zoom. So if they want to, they can all participate. But you know, the remote world is challenging for many kids. And then just looking ahead, we have our first day of the marking period was this past Monday. And we're starting the second semester already. Town Hall tomorrow night with Dr. McGowan, seven fifteen. Family of Color Group meets Thursday at seven. And then our report cards are mailed home just in time for the February recess break. Kids always love that. We don't usually mail report cards home, but because of the pandemic, we're trying to make sure they get everything they need. So they're on the portal right now, but they'll be mailed home hard copy as well. And that's, that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Tom. And you know, the one thing that strikes me again, and I've said this a number of times, but I think it's bears repeating. You know, you spoke at toward the end of your report there about the failures, the, our monitoring of failures. And you discussed remote students, hybrid students. All of you, all four business, all four of our principals in your reports all year have highlighted all of the outreach being all year have highlighted all of the outreach being done to make sure we're doing all we can no matter how a student is learning, right? No matter how a family chose or had to had restrictions that they had to choose. And all of you worked so hard at that and all of our teachers and staff. Uh, we know that some students are going to need additional help, supports, recovery uh as we move forward. But as a district, I think we should all be very proud of the ability uh that are, that all of our folks, our leaders and all of our folks have shown to incorporate hybrid and remote folks, reaching out where needed and trying to provide anything that they can along the way. And it's still a challenge. It will be a challenge, but uh the board is very appreciative of that continuing and ongoing effort. So thank you very much. Uh, we did want to make sure we mention that again. It comes through every time we do through the the principal report. So thank you. Uh, moving on next, we have an agenda item this evening for approval of the 2021, 2022 school calendar. And prior to the board handling that motion and handing that item, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGowan to provide some information.
There it is, Dr. Hall, liking your chops. Sorry you didn't have it ahead of time. We don't rarely get one up on you, but there's, there is the logo as uh.
I can't take it off the screen either.
No, you can't. Don't worry, you'll have it soon enough and then it'll be everywhere far and wide from Dr. Hall's email. Different, a little bit different this year in terms of calendar and wanted to present uh to the community in this sense and to the board, an overview of what we're proposing to you and information that we've been sharing with you. First, to discuss a little bit about the process of how the calendars developed, which is probably a mystery to many people. We've, we go through a series of steps to to collaborate in the calendar, but to recognize what happens around us and in terms of the requirements from the state in order to develop the best calendar we can. And it boils down to a bunch of steps. First of all, the state dates being determined relative to Regents exams, uh the rating day at the end of the school year, um any other dates that the state uh needs us to recognize. Three, three A testing, for example, being another. And there are scoring windows and makeup dates around those uh three, three eight test in particular that we have to take into account when we're developing our calendar also. We have to look at our contractual agreements, who works when and what the agreements are in terms of the number of days that are worked. We also participate in the development of the region, regional calendar uh through BOSI's. And as a matter of fact, representing the area on that committee is Judy Wegman, our BTA president on behalf of Monroe County Teachers. And I also participate in that discussion as a, as one of the Monroe County Superintendent reps to that committee. We take a look at goals um that we have internally for our calendar and think about what we would like to accomplish for our kids and our staff in developing the calendar. And then uh develop a draft calendar collaboratively, work alongside the BTA in that conversation as well, thinking about the instructional priorities and the work requirements around that as well. And then present a draft calendar to the Board of Education for their considers consideration. The challenges we had in developing this year's calendar are really boiled down to six buckets or so, so to speak. First, a late Labor Day is one thing that we had to consider um coming into the second week. And so that really takes out uh a chunk of September that we would normally be able to have school or at least a few days. The positioning of holidays that we have traditionally observed, in this case, uh Rosh Hashanah in particular, taking place on Tuesday and Wednesday after Labor Day, which uh if both of those days were days without school for students and staff, uh would be problematic in having an opening day for staff on a Thursday, for example, and then the start for students on Friday. So we've made an adjustment there to hopefully accommodate uh both of those issues. The rating day, which originally was scheduled for Thursday, that last week in June, the Thursday was eventually switched by the state to the Friday, but we had to take a look at where that would fall as well. And that's significant because at the secondary level, at the high school level in particular, it counts as a day of school, not for the elementary. The scoring windows, uh another example is that the scoring window for three, three A tests ends on April 13th. So the break taking place during that week, which would have then been inclusive of the traditional Good Friday day off, uh would have eliminated opportunities for scoring of the assessments. A desire to to develop a more inclusive calendar. If we're going to talk the talk, we should be walking the walk and thinking about how to honor all members of our school community to the best of our ability. And the snow day pilot program this year, the state gave an opportunity for school districts to consider remote instruction days in lieu of snow days. In other words, on a day you would have otherwise called a snow day, there was an opportunity to have a day of school by offering remote instruction. And so that was another uh consideration for us as well. The objectives in the development of our calendars, I mentioned before, we had some considerations, but also some additional um objectives. We wanted to meet our state expectations for the number of days, of course, that those are the guidelines we follow. Develop a calendar that honors and includes members of our school community and be more inclusive than we have been in the past. Consider what our calendar communicates. The calendar communicates quite a bit about a school community, what the school community honors, how we are inclusive, how we recognize holidays. Take advantage of scoring and make up windows to the best of our ability, as I mentioned that three, three eight issue, and provide certainty and predictability as well uh to the community around the the times when we take breaks, et cetera, and to honor the BOSI's calendar. Remember, some of our students, particularly at the high school level, attend a BOSI's program for only half their day. So if we have instructional days that are far off of the BOSI's calendar, our kids either uh have not nowhere to go in the afternoon when they're in our school program where they miss days of instruction at the BOSI's program if we don't have school that morning. And so we need to always be considering that in the development of our calendar as well. And finally, the proposals that we're making in our calendar this year, and I'll show an image of the calendar in just a moment, uh would be, we're proposing indicating a recognition of indigenous people on the observed federal holiday of Columbus Day. And so we're proposing a titling it on the calendar that we are observing Columbus Day as the federal holiday and recognizing indigenous people. And I would like to point out uh that the board was presented with a series of letters uh over multiple years, actually, from seventh grade students uh who had explored this topic, debated this topic and made a variety of recommendations. And I think this is a really good way to address an issue by both observing the federal holiday, which continues to be named Columbus Day. And in our state, it's been made very clear by the governor that it will remain as such in New York State. But also recognize the uh the plight, the burden and the experience of indigenous people related to Columbus, related to the founding um or the discovery of lands here uh by European explorers and have a conversation around that without changing the name entirely and ignoring that important aspect of history as well. And so uh we'd like to name frankly at both on the calendar by observing Columbus Day and recognizing indigenous people. We'd like to utilize the second day of Rosh Hashanah for a superintendent's conference day prior to school opening and accommodate staff members who would be unable to attend that day and make sure that is comfortable for them as well, while maintaining two days of instruction then in that first week of school. We'd like to leverage technology to promote remote instruction during emergency snow days. And where that has gone very well this year, people have really adapted to that process of teaching remotely. That would look similar to our current Wednesday schedules, but we would encourage, not just encourage, but we would be providing remote instruction on those days. Hopefully, the state will continue to allow that to be counted as a school day. The warning is, and I have two warnings, so to speak, at the end, would be that we'll have to reconsider the calendar because the use of those emergency days uh right now, those snow days, and doing that remotely allows us for flexibility in the calendar. If they don't allow that, the state doesn't allow that, we'll have to reconsider that flexibility in different days on the calendar that are convenience days. So December 23rd, November 23rd, for example, uh but are not holidays. We would need to reconsider those particular days so that we have enough a cushion going into next year for the emergencies that may come up. And finally, we'd like to be more inclusive and thoughtful in providing a day off for the Muslim holiday eat and in recognition of Juneteenth um this June. And so uh, I'm sorry, that would be next June on June 20th. And uh I think that it is important again for us to be a more inclusive school community and not ask members of our school community to put their religious observant, uh observance aside on that day, uh but rather recognize where an important day that eat is for our Muslim students and families and staff members by recognizing that on the calendar. And of course, Juneteenth, something that frankly, historically, many of us have not paid nearly enough attention to, learned enough about, or experienced in a way that is very important. And we ought to be recognizing that day as well as an important moment in our American history and our experiences uh should uh lead us to want to honor that day as well. So our implications for the future, I'm sorry, our two additional considerations would be implications for the future. In other words, these are days off that we think are very important. They should become part of our regular consideration in the development of the calendar, part of our regular routine. And the snow day issue is one that we'll have to consider as we go forward and understand whether the state will allow us to leverage that time and whether that's an effective use of time as well. If that remote instruction is working or if we'd be better off in future years to still reserve days, we'll have to consider that as we move forward. Going to stop that share and then just share what the calendar then uh will look like. So here we go. So on your screen is the current format for uh the school calendar then as we move forward. And you can see just a few of the highlights. As I mentioned, that September issue around Rosh Hashanah, the superintendent's conference day then would be on the Wednesday and the first day of school for students on the ninth. Uh, we would observe Yom Kippur on uh the 16th as we have. And uh just looking forward, and I am sorry, I said November uh 23rd. It would be November 24th is that day before Thanksgiving. We would have to take another look at and then December 23rd. Of course, the Regents exam schedule um is in, uh we can see they're scheduled right now, the 25th through 20th in January. And the 15th through the 23rd with a day off for Juneteenth being recognized statewide, as a matter of fact, in June. And the additional holiday for us would uh that would be new again, eat on uh May 3rd. Any questions on the calendar? The big date that people are usually looking for is the date in April for the break and that would be the third week in April. That is in the regional calendar as well. And as I mentioned, having it the week before uh proved impossible because of the scoring windows uh that would still exist 11 through 13 in April provided by the state. Any questions for, from any board members?
If anybody has any specific question uh to what Dr. McGowan presented, and now would be a great time. But what I would also, I I guess, I would entertain a motion to approve the calendar in a second and then we'll have further conversation and discussion uh in more detail. I guess that might be blended in into one might be a good thing. So uh, may I have a motion to approve the calendar as proposed?
So moved.
Karen, uh move by. Sue. So uh, I guess for the board, uh let's, let's talk about this a little bit. Obviously, for the community, first of all, that that calendar, like all of our material, is posted on the agenda for this evening on the website and uh will be available. And as Dr. McGowan said, many families, uh most families, you know, they're usually checking with us in January and February immediately with regard to vacation breaks, right? For the next school year and hopefully that those can be held in a, in a more normal fashion going forward. But we also uh want to talk this this evening a little bit uh about the, our approach this year and the discussion around being more culturally responsive, I think, to our entire community around certain holidays and certain periods and the changes in the ads that we've made that have been recommended to us. The board has had input on. This goes back a long time. We've had a number of community members over time. Uh, Dr. McGowan mentioned students. Our seventh grade social studies group for a number of years has during their um Who Deserves a Holiday lesson has written us very informative, poignant, uh well thought out letters on all aspects of that discussion around specifically Columbus Day and indigenous peoples, but really taking it beyond that. Uh, we also frequently will receive letters uh from our law and government students especially, but other high school students will email us uh around observances and calendar and how it works. And I think that uh, you know, what we've tried to do in in this discussion over the past few years is look at this from, from a lens of uh, first of all, the county calendar. And it is Dr. McGowan clearly articulated, once the calendar gets approved on a countywide basis, the ability to maneuver within that calendar is is somewhat limited. And one of the things that does, did open things up for us were, uh, you know, this, uh, one of the benefits of our pandemic learning and and the the ability to to instruct students remotely and to look at snow days a little differently. So from a board standpoint, I wanted to add that bit of information to the conversation. Board members, fellow board members, does anyone have any questions or comments or anything that you'd like to add at this point?
Well, I just, it was brought up earlier, Mark, by a couple of people, including Sue. But I appreciate that we've had a chance to hear consistently from the students about that and have that feedback provide uh influence to what we're talking about.
I also want to say in in my years on the board, I don't ever remember having as much serious and thoughtful conversation about um what our calendar should look like. And I'm, I'm really proud of where we are right now. And I think everybody has done a very wonderful and thoughtful job of looking more broadly at our community and I'm most appreciative of that.
You know, and I would add to that, Julene, I I I wouldn't want any members of the community to think that we believe we've accommodated 100% of families and individuals, whether they be staff members or students, obviously. Uh, there are many other days of recognition within cultures, communities, faith communities. But we do endeavor and we work very hard as a district to accommodate any needs that any individual has. But we've tried to address areas of a substantial population in in ways that are are doable for the district. So uh, you know, I think you raised a great point there too, and it is a proud time, I do believe, and I agree with you. Any other members of the board that wish to share thoughts or further questions or further input?
Uh, Dr. McGowan knows that he and I go way back with our conversations about snow days. I love a good snow day, but I think that this is a really reasonable way to honor more members of our community. And I'm happy to have, I I'm hoping that the state will continue to allow us to do that. I mean, there's plenty of years we don't even have a snow day, right? But I I just think it's, this is the best use of our time.
Thank you, Karen. Great point. Uh, anyone else at this point? Uh, one thing I would like to add, I, we touched on it, but we also have had uh discussion, the board has, and we've had that discussion with with the leadership, Kevin and Dr. Baker and Mr. Limo. It's important to the board, it's important to the, it's the work of the district moving forward, that we continue to make sure that we approach curricularly the, these different designated days, if you will. We mentioned that we have received letters and assignments have been given to students to explore different parts of history and culture. And we, it is our hope that uh these additional designated days that we are taking action on this evening will also spur further conversation and thought at an age and grade appropriate level as we move forward. So.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mark, just because, you know, a lot of times like I think it, it's easy to get caught up with just checking a box to say, you know, you know, to to cover our DEI, we're going to check a box and say. But I think that a lot of the discussions we've had is let's use these days off and let's, you know, let's see the words on the calendar and really use that time to to reflect. So I think it's, it's meaningful days and a lot of thought has gone into it. And again, we've all mentioned the seventh grade students, but reading those letters really, you know, it was, it was uh, it was really moving, you know, and it's nice to be able for our board to reflect the thoughts of our students because that's, that's why we're all here.
Thank you. Well said, Sue. We do try to, we do try to listen and take stock. Anything further? Any other board members who haven't spoken want to share before we call the question? All right then. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, and all involved. It's not easy to put this calendar together ever. And this is particularly challenging. So thank you for everybody that's worked on that. And then I will ask, yes, Julene, I'm.
I think Christina wanted to say something.
No, it was just uh, just thinking about the calendar. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Lunar New Year for any families celebrating this weekend with some yummy food or money for the kids or uh sweets. So it just made me think that I I'm glad we're doing this and I hope everybody gets yummy takeout this weekend.
Thank you, Christina.
So what a great ad, right? To wrap it up. Thank you, Christina. We appreciate that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And we have approved the school calendar for next year, seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
I want to thank you for a lot of really thoughtful conversation around it. I didn't want to weigh in in the board member section before you voted. But other than to say again, thanks for the conversation on this because as board members, one of the things you can do in your practice and in your part of the organization is think about what do your policies and your practices? Organization is think about what do your policies and your practices communicate to the community. As the elected representatives of the community, and so this is a really great step for, I think, to communicate great messages and to the point. It's been made by several of you about what it says about who we are and then it's not a check the box, it's a. We're going to recognize that this is an important. Moment for people in our community that hasn't been an opportunity for them to celebrate or to reflect and that often. What happens is people in our community. In underrepresented groups will have to sacrifice because of their desire to make sure that in their mind they assimilate or that they are not. A burden or that they are uncomfortable asserting what is really important to them and we want to make sure we're proactively finding opportunities to embrace what's important to everybody in the community. And be reflective about that, and this is not a common conversation in places. I don't believe any other district in Monroe County now or has taken eat off. And we're not interested in being the first to be the first, we're interested in being leaders in, in how we think about our entire community, I'm very. Proud to be a part of a group that has done that, so thank you for that, much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGowan, we appreciate those words. And finally, this evening, one other item on our agenda, our consent agenda, may I have a motion please to approve that item?
So moved.
Second. By Andrea, seconded by Larry, all in favor? Any opposed, that would be seven in favor and none opposed. That's the extent of our agenda for this evening, Dr. McGowan, anything further tonight?
Nothing at all, I hope you all have a wonderful evening, stay healthy, stay masked, stay distanced.
Thank you. Board members, anything else that we need to deal with this evening? Then we next meet on February 23rd, we will remind the community that night will be a business meeting at five, or it's a, yeah, business meeting. Business meeting at 5:00 PM and there'll be a community forum at 7:00 PM, but lots more to come on that. Then I will entertain, please, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Karen. Seconded by Julene, all in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor and none opposed, and we are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.